We've been talking about the, from experts from around the country on these critical issues of the day, and we thought we wanted to end with those decision-makers, those that wrestle with these practical decisions from a municipal standpoint. And so, we're going to end with a town hall session where the, we'll have a moderated discussion, and then we're also going to incorporate some of the amazing ideas that we've heard throughout the day and throughout lunchtime from you all. So with that, let me introduce very quickly our three panelists and moderators, they get set up with their mics. We have Martin Chavez, who's the past mayor of Albuquerque, New Mexico, and who is also the executive director of ICLI, Local Governments for Sustainability USA. I should also mention that Marty has been an advisor to the Intelligent Cities Project. We have William Malar, who's the president of the American Public Transportation Association. We have Mitchell Silver, who's the president of the American Planning Association and the director of planning at Raleigh, North Carolina. And our moderator today will be Michael Duffy, the Washington bureau chief for Time. Please give them a warm round of applause. I'm welcome.
As soon as everyone's mic'd up, we'll start. I'm Michael Duffy, from Time Magazine. Thank you all for joining us. Thank you for the introduction, Scott. Our job today is to talk about how to build an intelligent city, and luckily, I have three of the greatest intelligent builders right here. But since we're talking as much about cities that are already built, we're talking also about how to rebuild them, or maybe the better word is renovate them into intelligent cities. And with that, thank you, gentlemen, for all joining us today. I'm going to just start and go this way. Marty, you were mayor of Albuquerque, three times. If you had to pick what the most important building block is, or would be, in taking a typical or average American city as we know it, or that we might live in now, and turning it into what would be a more perfect place to be, what would be maybe the top one or two?
As we say, a more perfecter community. One side doesn't fit all when you're talking about local communities, and so mayors on the west side of Mississippi, if you will, have a different challenge than those on the east side. If your city was built in an era, in premise in an era of cheap gas, cheap land, infinite resource, water, et cetera, then the natural thing to do is what western cities did, and that's sprawl. Whereas cities here on the east coast were built before the automobile. So, a different challenge. And of course, the biggest challenge for policymakers is, once you know what the reality is, what do you change for what you do? So, for Albuquerque, like many of the western cities, we're confronted with a sprawled-out community. Density, obviously, an imperative for a whole host of reasons, which have been discussed throughout the day. You have a community that is in one mindset, leadership that's perhaps in a little bit different mindset, and so the challenge is to bring the two together. And you do that around the public processes, you do that around the infrastructure, and through the planning process.
So consensus, an important building block?
Consensus, to the extent possible. Albuquerque is 528,000 people with about 1 billion opinions.
Bill, do you have a different building block that you would pick out if you had to pick out one or two?
Well, I certainly would agree with that building block, but I would pick out the block of using the information that we already have and that we already collect, and use it in a way to make the city more intelligent, more efficient. Just as the mayor used the Mississippi River to divide east from west in different ways of looking at cities, what we're finding in the public transit field is the people west are discovering that those people east actually did have some good ideas. And so, we've seen the rise of light rail investment, and bus rapid transit investment, and other forms of public transportation that frankly, many of the western cities never thought that they would need. So, using the data, using the experience, looking around, pulling it together, and then making a new set of decisions seems to be very popular around the country right now.
Okay, Mitchell, your turn.
I would say first and foremost is a city that understands its purpose. Very often, people think cities are there for just being there, but cities have a purpose. They have an economy, they have to provide jobs, they have to provide recreation, mobility, access, not just to the city, but to the region. So, I first start with the purpose, that the public understands the purpose, the elected officials understand the purpose, and then all the systems start to fit in place. So, that is, very often, we start a long-range discussion or exercise, is the first to understand what your purpose is, and it varies from place to place and region to region. So, if I had that ideal notion, my first conversation is for that city to understand what its purpose is.
So, again, consensus.
Yes.
Now, as the city planner for Raleigh, go Wolfpack.
Well, yes, go Wolfpack. I'm from the northeast, so, you know, I'll adopt the Wolfpack.
Okay, fair enough.
If they would win, I'm sorry, I didn't say that.
Clearly, we don't have consensus yet in Raleigh. Even in Raleigh. Talk to us a little bit about where, you said, where the city needs to go, or what its goal as a city is. Can you talk to us a little bit about how you think in those terms about Raleigh for a minute?
Yes. Well, we started our comprehensive planning process back in 2006, and that was the first question, is that where do we want to grow, where we want to be by 2030? We had some of the bad examples, unfortunately, I don't know if you're from Atlanta, but we said, okay, we don't want to be that. But we wanted to start figuring out what would Raleigh be when it grew up? It's kind of at that point of adolescence, where it was a city coming of age, and we wanted to learn from other cities. And so, we had a conversation about what is a 21st century city? We did that two years before we even started the planning process, about our blueprint for growth. We did an assessment of how much land we had left, we found out we had about 20,000 acres, and we knew we could not sustain ourselves on building low density. We had to find a new approach. So, we went through that exercise about how are we going to grow, how are we going to deal with an aging population, how are we going to deal with a sprawling community? We're known as sprawly, which most people may or may not know. And we realized that the pattern we used in the 1980s and 90s was not going to work for the 21st century. And so, we laid out this information to the public, a very intelligent population, and they decided to take a new way forward. And as a result, we now have about acre growth centers that will accommodate about 70% of all of our new growth. We expect to grow by roughly 250,000 over the next 20 years on this 20,000 acres. Low density wasn't going to work any longer, it would be too difficult to sustain it in terms of road network, and so, we decided to take a new path forward. So, we have this blueprint that 96% of the public supported, and as a result, we had unanimous approval by the elected officials.
One more question, did you get the growth center idea from someplace else, or did that come in integrally?
Well, there are other places, either your hub and spoke, like Charlotte, for example. We decided to go polycentric. It had a lot of advantages, it's more transit-ready, and so, since the triangle basically is built on a polycentric notion, we decided to use polycentric throughout our city, and so, it is basically a centers and nodes plan, except we have multiple centers. And so, that's done in many other places across the country.
And do you call them growth centers?
Yes, we call it growth centers.
Marty, it sounds like one of the important ingredients in an intelligent city isn't just consensus, but also learning from others.
Well, cities' mayors are incredibly competitive, and the best ideas are very often the ones you swipe from a neighboring community, or one even around the globe. And so, what you have is this, in the context of this competition, is a design, hopefully by design, cities don't grow entirely by design, about how are you going to attract the best and the brightest, if you will? You compete for employers, you compete for employees, because increasingly, as we know from much of Florida, that's an important way to attract the jobs, if you have the quality of life. And so, then you just build on the assets. And not every community has the same assets. If you're Mike Nutter in Philadelphia, and you're rehabbing the downtown, and you're trying to attract young people to your downtown core, well, what if 20-somethings really want, have mountains? Can't do much about that if you're in Philadelphia. So, you say, well, what things would attract that class of individual to my community? Build on that.
Gotcha. So, borrowing's totally okay. Bill, you've worked in transportation, particularly in Pennsylvania, all your life. Is there a transport concept or idea that you found yourself seeing elsewhere that you went and swiped? I was going to say borrowed.
Nah, borrow, swipe, whatever, the public paid for it, let's use it everywhere if it works.
It's common use.
You know, on that. Yeah, I think the concept that I finally see people having is, a light goes on and people suddenly understand land use and transportation in together, and you simply can't deal with them separately. So, if you only got 20,000, what'd you say?
Acres.
Acres to deal with, in a already developed community, you have to make sure that the plans for those 20,000 acres can be supported. And so, I see more and more around the country, discussion around that. I see lots of communities trying to build that consensus, whether it's through some kind of charrette process, or other public-type process, to get people to stop and think, what is the kind of community that I want? There are certainly some communities that are well-known for this. I'm sure today sometime, the phrase Portland, Oregon, got mentioned, or Salt Lake City, Utah, might not be one on somebody's, what do I want?
Red screen.
Yeah, looking right at it. And yet, they're doing great, great work in that community. It started with a community process of beginning to ask what kind of community you want. So, I think the melding of those two things, stealing that idea that you can't do it in a vacuum, is one thing, one really positive development I see happening across the country.
You also talked, Bill, in your first list, when I asked about building blocks, about the use of data in particular.
Yeah.
And how municipalities use it, learn from it, and I'm guessing, go back and get more of it. Can you talk for a minute about what you've seen in that area that you think is particularly useful, and how it has been profitable?
Well, I think there's at least three good examples to think about data. One, which are the earlier panel, the one right before ours, was wrestling with it a little bit. There's data all around, how do you take that and turn it into real information that you can organize? Some of that is by certainly using the latest technology and whatnot to try to manage it, map it, get it out in ways that people can deal with it. So, that's a general statement. A second way that communities are using is to try to make their services much, much more efficient. So, for example, in public transportation, it's much easier now with automatic passenger counters and other techniques, to really understand how people want to use that transit system, so you can take it, redesign it, and do it. But the best thing is in your pocket, and it's what consumers can do. I literally can dial up any major city in the world now and find out when the next bus, the next train. This takes the fear out of people saying, maybe I will take that step and use the bus or use the train tomorrow. I think that will have a profound effect in the future, because there'll be a real choice for people, provided, of course, the service is offered. So, there's three examples of the way they're using data.
One more thing on that, and maybe you could talk about this, Mitchell. Is there some way technology can be used to bring the consensus we talked about, to get people to start itself to think about this? Have you seen that before, not just in terms of how they act, but in terms of how they think about cities?
Yes. We use technology, we had a unique software to engage the public, that was several years ago, now there are other applications that are available. But the most important is to have a conversation with the public, to talk about the choices, but more importantly, the implications. And often, we don't have that conversation. So, we wanted to tell the public, if you keep doing this, here are the implications. We were going through a major drought in 2007, 2008.
Right.
Everyone was worried, it was very uncertain about the future. I mean, it was a very bad period, where if your lawn with brown was a new green, you know, people smelled you and make sure you had an odor, if you did, that means you were conserving water, they were sniffing you all day, you know, thank you for conserving water. But part of our job was really to give the public a level of certainty about the future, that if you do not look at conservation, we're only going to hit this milestone again and again, until we can build another reservoir. So, part of what it is, is talking about the consequences, a sprawl pattern. We have an aging population, we ask the public, what happens when you turn 70 or 75, and your license is taken away? You are auto-dependent, live in an auto-dependent community, and they said, well, I'm going to depend on a friend, and that friend said, wait a minute, I was going to depend on you. We will have isolated seniors, Atlanta now understands this, they're now starting to deal with it. So, we had a conversation about the implications and the choices that you cannot avoid. Smart cities know their sense of, you know, either you're going to be in denial, or you're going to deal with it. So, smart regions, smart cities know their sense of urgency 10 years before it's urgent. And we communicated to the public, are you going to wait till the crisis hits you, or are you going to act? And so, given the choices, given the implications, the residents, time and time again, made the right choices, and we use all sorts of technology to reach out, and that's where we're able to determine that 96% of our residents actually said they supported the choices we placed before them in the comprehensive plan.
Technology also is allowing us to show things to people. Many, many people, you know, you can give them all the facts and figures you want, but unless they can see it, unless they can sense it, they can see how it fits in their community. So, things like scenario planning, which you could describe statistically, and maybe with one or two artist's renderings, now are very possible to do. To go to, to record views of neighborhoods in other cities and bring it back home, this is a different way of doing it. Dealing with the density issue in that, I had privilege to be in Hawaii several times over the last few years, as they've tried to figure out whether they wanted to improve their bus system only, or build a rail line. Well, except for visitors, nobody in Hawaii had ever experienced what a real urban passenger rail line is about. So, new technology allows you to at least give people some sense of what it is that they're being asked to comment upon, and some sense of confidence that this is what will result if that, we make that choice.
There's also, it's not just how you communicate with the public, but how you receive information back, that can be transformational. Common around the country now are 3-1-1 systems, I don't think we have one here in the DC area, but you take every question that comes in from a caller on the 3-1-1 system, it goes into a database, whether it's reporting graffiti, a pothole, what's going on at the local theater, the public theater, what art is on exhibit at the municipal museum. And you can see from those patterns exactly what people care about. And then, you can also use those, for example, on a pothole complaint, that's dispatched, you see how long it takes to fix that, so you can immediately start working on the efficiency with which you deliver your services, and you can hold individual employees accountable, if that is not getting done quickly enough. So, the ability to receive the information is really important for a smart city.
You were going to say something, Mitchell.
I just wanted to add, because there was a point made about technology. When we looked at the long-range plan pursued by our Metropolitan Planning Organization, it looked pretty bad when we went out to 2035. When we went to this growth center model, it actually improved what was the level of service. It went from poor, failing, to actually fair to good. So, we communicated to the public by going to this growth center model, over the 20-year, 30-year period, it will save the taxpayers hundreds of millions of dollars, and so, very often, what we have to communicate is the value of smart planning, and not just this profession of regulators, but actually, we're in a business of saving you, the taxpayers, money over the long haul. And those are kind of the messages using technology that we're able to get across to the public, and it's been highly effective. We also show them what we call the smart growth dividend, by using the value of land, that you can use an acre for one high-rise, or you can use 600 acres for 150 homes, same tax value. And so, we're trying to tell the public that if you do not support downtown development or compact development, what you're really saying is, please raise my taxes, I'll carry the tax load. And so, we're able to have that conversation about the implications of sprawl, in the long run, your taxes are going to go up, rather than being smart about how to use the value of land.
This raises something I want to ask you, Mr. Mayor, which is, if you were, if you'd landed from Mars and come to this conference today as your first stop, you'd think, wow, there's a great potential for political consensus in the United States, because these guys sound pretty optimistic that you can get from here to there, if you just have a normal, rational conversation with voters and citizens. It's not been my experience recently. But I want to hear you talk a little bit, because you've been mayor, you were mayor for, I think you were the sixth and the eighth mayor of Albuquerque. Have you seen the public's attitude about essentially, shared planning responsibilities, get smarter, sharper, more mature? Are they getting, are regular citizens getting smarter about city planning in general, not just the city planners?
I don't think people, I think planners, architects, public officials tend to be the ones that really focus on how a city works. People know quite well what works for them personally, and so, they'll draw down this little bit of information, that bit of information, only as it applies to enhancing their own ability to live their lives. And so, I'd like to say, yes, everyone has the same level of understanding that an urban planner might have. I don't think they do. I think they know whether it facilitates their lifestyle, and then they make choices based on that. And that's a huge factor in how cities grow, and it's not necessarily planned, it's basically on the free market of individual desire.
Let me ask it a different way. Is there a renewed focus you sense in the places that you work about the power and importance of simply, what is local?
Yeah, I would say there is. I would say there is a much larger percentage of the population that understands that, again, take transportation, that if we're going to spend transportation dollars, that's going to do something to me. It may help me, it may hurt me, it may whatever, but it's going to do something. And the federal law has required that the planning process be much more open than it was when I entered the field many years ago, and I see many people taking advantage of it. So, there's many more and different people at the table. We're starting to see not just the traditional sort of engineers and people with a very clear vested interest in the outcome of the decision, but we're perhaps seeing advocates for better health in the community coming to wonder about what it means to air quality, or what it means to obesity, or things like that. So, we're seeing in this process, at least I'm seeing, a much wider audience. Now, some of that depends how you set the process up. I mean, if you try to set it up at a very minimal amount of public involvement, of course, you're not going to get as much involvement as if you invite them all in, as apparently you did in Raleigh. But I think generally, it is opened up, and there are more interests and more groups at the table than when I started.
I want you to play on this question too, but I'm going to ask Mitchell first, which is how, since we all live in multicultural, multi-ethnic, multiracial cities, or most of us do, how do we ensure that everyone, even with the great technology advantages that we had, that we didn't have before, in a much more open process, that everybody gets heard? That's a challenge now, that maybe we didn't have 25 years ago.
Well, we set that upfront as our commitment to the process, because we also looked at generational, we looked at the various generations, the greatest, mature, boomer, X, Y, Z, and we had to reach out to them. And then, we had to look at ethnicity, different races and ethnicities communicate very differently. And so, we set up upfront, a very different process. If we had to go to a church meeting and picnic, we did that. We had in our children's museum, we engaged young people in what we call Kid City. So, we used a variety of ways. Every other month, we had an event to make sure the public was engaged. We brought out maps to help the residents design their community, and so, you can't use one way for one community, and so, it was our way of reaching out to the public to make sure we hit those very different audiences, because we heard earlier today, usually get the usual suspects, they tend to dominate, have political access, and tend not to get you the results that you want. And so, we made a painful effort to go out of our way to make sure that everybody was engaged.
Did this ring a bell?
Well, we watch the rich get richer, the poor get poorer in this country, and it's frightening to me. ICLI is an organization of over 600 local governments around the country. We do most of the climate action planning, sustainability planning for local governments, including the District Columbia's plan. And one of the three E's of sustainability is equity. And the challenge of making sure that those on the lower economic side of the equation have access to the technology, you know, I don't like to say the bridge to the future anymore, because I think that's a little bit trite, but frankly, if that's what technology is, we've got a whole aspect of the population in this country that does not have access to that bridge, and we will pay for that down the road, at much greater volume of dollars than we are today.
Is this a particular problem in transportation, since you had pulled out your magic timetable?
Well, it's certainly a challenge, and you've got to do it. You've got to make sure everybody has the chance to come, can come, not everybody will come, and so, you shouldn't beat yourself up over what you can't control, but the mayor is quite right, making sure, and it tends to be lesser educated and lesser income people that are the bigger challenge, but if you start with the process at the beginning, you can do a pretty good job with it.
Thank you. They've been trying to queue me to take audience questions. Apparently, they've sent smoke signals, semaphore, nothing has worked. Finally, I got the queue, so, sorry.
I thought it was advisory only.
It was a guideline.
It's just getting so interesting. All right, we'll go to questions, forgive me. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Donna McIntyre, State Department. I've loved this afternoon, all day long, the different definitions of intelligent cities, but I haven't heard one that's fairly definitive of what we're talking about. So, I'm looking at, you know, we've talked about livable cities, green cities, healthy cities, low-carbon cities, intelligent cities. It's something that we really struggle with in the building sector, too. What is it that we're talking about, so that we can start to measure it, so we can start competition in intelligent cities, or whatever we want to call it, sustainable cities? So, my question is, really, where do we look to for these definitions? I know ICLI, or Global City Facility Indicators, what would you pick as a guide for an index of city metrics? And then, before you answer that, I know that LEED really struggled with one particular issue, and then really never solved it, which was, can you build a green building in a very unsustainable ecosystem, for example, and still get a LEED certification? And can we think about cities? Will we ever come to a point for cities where we just shouldn't be investing in certain locations anymore, because it's unsustainable, or it's just not intelligent? So, I'm, leave that.
Three questions, you get to pick.
It's 5:30, that was like concentrated, thank you. Let me answer the question this way, because a question's asked about intelligent cities, and I want to be careful how I answer your question, because we are searching, in the 21st century, the design profession is searching for the kind of the next era we're moving into, we're not sure what it is. But I caution everybody in the room to differentiate between trends and the trendy. And we're at that period right now, where there's buzzwords flying almost every other week, and for you to find a source is going to be difficult, because I'm not sure if we're looking at the trends or the trendy. There's no question, as we go forward, we need to be smarter about how we develop. We need to be more intelligent on how we sustain our communities, there's no question about it, due to population growth. But the 21st century, in my opinion, we're struggling to find out which way to go, how to be more sustainable, and so, you're going to hear these buzzwords, blue urbanism, landscape urbanism, new urbanism, smart cities, smart regions, intelligent cities. We're in the trend and trendy period right now, but I do believe, being smarter, how we grow through an intelligent city must be part of that equation, because as we grow, the systems become more complex. So, I can't say there's one resource, because by next week, there'll be new buzzwords coming out. And I think there's a search to find out, what is a panacea to deal with a world that is urbanizing at a rapid pace? So, I'm only going to answer one of your three questions, and my colleagues will handle the other two.
All right, I'll handle the one on LEED only after I say, I don't think it matters whether you call it a smart city or an intelligent city. You know, in the context that you're having the discussion, you just have to establish the ground rules. It'll, you know, historians will tell us what the period was when we're done with it, and we're searching for the next thing. On LEED, if I understood your question, it was kind of hard to hear, but as I understood your question, if a LEED building, a platinum is built in the middle of nowhere, is that a good thing? And the answer is sure, it's better than if the LEED building, if the building weren't LEED. But it would have been much better if it were a non-LeED building, built in the center of a city, that people could travel to by public transit, you'd use a whole lot less energy. Now, if you can get the platinum LEED building built in the center of the city, now you've got something. So, you know, it's certainly better to do it than not, but I was really glad that they've started to work with LEED and D now, and some other things, that begin to take the context of the building into account, because ultimately, that's, I think, where we want to get on those kinds of things.
There was a third question, but I can't remember what it was.
Well, there was one about whether or not you'll ever have a situation where that vacant piece of property ought not to be built upon, and, pardon?
At the city.
At the city.
At the city level.
And I guess I would refer you to Mark Twain, who said, we could do that, but it would make sense. So, the answer is yes and no. That point will happen, there will be a point, perhaps, when we stop building cities right next to rivers that overflow on a regular basis, next to oceans that have rising sea level, but it's going to not be pretty in the process.
Thank you, gentlemen. Yes?
I'm Amy Tars, I'm with the National Capital Planning Commission here in Washington, the
I'm with the National Capital Planning Commission here in Washington, DC. And my, I guess my question is, can you talk a little bit about smart cities and their resilience to disaster? Not, not just in terms of planning for disaster, but also in the recovery aspect. Currently, the more I talk to people who have been victims of the current and the past, you know, from Katrina to present, a lot of these friends of mine who had personally experienced being in such a disaster have told me that pretty much predominantly, their communities are dependent on FEMA. But it seems to me that the cities are also starting, in certain cases, certain cities have more resources and are more prepared than other cities in terms of helping their residents. But there's also that vulnerable population. And again, there's that divide between people who have means and people who don't. And the communities with means have a quicker way of recovering and actually re-establishing their communities versus parts of the city where because it's, they are communities of lesser means, they're still struggling to even recover from, you know, from whatever disaster has happened. So I would be interested to, again, hear if you've heard of any new ways of cities to become more sustainable in terms of their resilience to disaster.
Well, you do know that I think the majority of our population, at least here in the US and probably around the world, live very close to the coast. So hazard mitigation and what we're seeing in terms of the storm events is certainly something that hazard mitigation is going to increase over time as we see more and more people living on the coast. So it isn't common upon those regions, those cities, to understand how they have to be smarter, how they plan and adapt to some of the climate change. I can't tell you if I know of any examples. There's a lot of research going on in terms of the Dutch and how they're working with the city of New Orleans. There'll be a conference next year in LA to see how we can deal in terms of some of the sea level rise and how they've been successful. So there are examples, there's no question, as I said earlier, as we grow, we have to be a lot smarter, and more and more of the world's population are living in hazard-prone areas. So hazard mitigation, in my opinion, we will have to get smarter because more of our population will live there. But other than that one example of the Dutch and what they're doing in the Netherlands and how they're trying to apply that work in New Orleans is just one example that I'm aware of.
Well, there's certainly many places that have a particular problem, and they're better at solving that problem. And certainly, the last few years in Florida have taught a lot of communities down there to be much better prepared for hurricanes. Now, I don't know if those same communities are pretty well-prepared for earthquakes, but they know hurricanes. Likewise, the west coast of the US, certainly, I mean, the retrofitting of the infrastructure in California, billions and billions of dollars in hopes of mitigating the problem with it. One thing that we're starting to think about is not only the planning for these things, but what's the resilience factor of the city? If you have, you know, the proverbial only one road in and one road out, and it's by the sea, well, you're running a great deal of risk if you're in an area that has lots of flooding and that. Or how about instead of all focusing just on roads, then making sure you've got a decent public transit system, making sure where your priorities are in the community for recovery? But I think there's a lot more work going on that. Interestingly, I think we usually blame the media. This actually is a time where media deserves some thanks because all of us see the results of disasters in ways that 25 years ago, we didn't, oh yeah, we heard there was a tornado in Joplin. Well, now we see it, we live it, and it makes it much easier for communities to get the will together to do planning and implementation and practice.
When you don't mitigate in regard to climate change, then you have to adapt. And one of the things that's come out of that conversation of adaptation is this whole notion of resilience. And I think that probably is the most important question for every city in America. Is your community resilient? How quickly can you spring back or adapt from some sort of event or make sure that you're going to sustain your community? We watched, all of us, watching what's going on in Japan, and I'll tell you, in terms of their built environment, infrastructure, above and below ground, they're probably one of the most resilient countries on the planet, far more than the United States today. I was on the receiving end, at the bottom of the steps, as refugees or evacuees came down from New Orleans. And about half of those that came to Albuquerque from New Orleans stayed. They didn't go back. And I can't imagine what would have happened here in the United States if we had the type of event that just happened in Japan. So that really is a $64,000 question. And it's fundable because it's important. It's where people live.
Resilience factor. Yes, sir. Thanks for waiting.
My name is Jay Helman. I sometimes introduce myself as George Bernard Shaw's unreasonable man. Because Shaw said, progress is the work of unreasonable men because reasonable men accept things the way they are. Well, I've been working on solving the conflict between how we regulate land use and the transportation systems that we build. And in particular, since we've been living with the automobile for so many decades, we have not brought rational thinking back to creating pedestrian fabrics surrounding rail stations so that more people can use the rail just by walking to it.
Sure.
The deficit of Wamata in this region causes the state of Maryland to write a check for $261 million. Nobody pays any attention to that, but we should because the state was well underwater this year, as are many local governments. So my question, it may be directed to you, Bill, more than anyone else, is what kind of data or experience do we have for areas that have less of a deficit because they have a more balanced usage of the rail system, more symmetrical, and more hours of the day so that there is revenue generated more efficiently?
That's why I answered earlier, tying land use and transportation together in a rational way. Transit, this is a trite statement of the day, you can write it down, trite statement of the day, transit is more used when you walk to it. I mean, if you already got to get in your car and drive a mile or two or five to get to a park and ride, well, some of you are going to just keep right on going in your car. So redesigning it in that way, figuring out different ways to pay for it. I had always heard in my professional career, gee, go to Hong Kong, go to Japan, the transit systems make money. So I went to Hong Kong, I went to Japan, they have marvelous transit systems, and they don't make any money on their transit. They make a fortune on their real estate. In this country, the federal law is you can buy just enough land with the federal money to put your transportation improvement, and not a square inch more than that. And so the value that a transit station brings goes to the private sector. Now, there's nothing wrong with the private sector making a buck. I don't have any problem with that at all, but the opportunity for the transit system, perhaps to pay for itself with the real estate and the proceeds of the real estate development, or the value that has been created by the public investment, seems to me the public ought to get that back in more than just increased property taxes. I think we're ready to start to have that discussion here. As painful as the building of the Silver Line to Dulles is, at least it does include a major component of the property owners paying for a lot of it. We're starting to see creative uses of transportation improvement districts, of tax increment financing, and a whole host of other things that we didn't think we could use in transportation, now we are. So I think, I think we're starting to understand it. We're looking at examples around the world and going, hey, there's a version of that that would work in the US. It may not be exactly like Hong Kong, but there's some version of that that we can figure out how to make happen here.
Now, Raleigh is pursuing a light rail system, so I'll say it officially, Mayberry's going metro. And so our advantage is because of the growth centers that I talked about, our light rail system will be connecting all of those growth centers. Right now, the entitlement on the ground, low density, but what we're doing is we're mapping within a half-mile radius, a grid. That's about the best we can do because it may take 10 years for that development to come, and some in the real estate community aren't sure transit's ever coming because we were denied the first time from the federal government. But if we put that grid in, whatever development we get, it is now pedestrian-friendly and transit-ready, and you can still develop. And I don't know what happened in most places. If I were to look at the Wamata line, I am sure, as I heard earlier, there are parking lots and the, it's really the road network, the network which will support the development, and that's something that we're learning, and we're putting it in place along all of the stops so that when development does come, the road and pedestrian network is already in place. That already is going to bump up value tremendously, and then we can see it turning over once the light rail does arrive, and it will.
Marty, final thought?
No, I suspect we're speaking to the choir on these, on these issues. I think ultimately, the marketplace of individuals, particularly young individuals, is going to make this decision. They understand the quality, the value of walkable communities. I don't own a car any longer, but it works here in Washington. I assure you, when I go home to Albuquerque, not so good. But there's a community in Albuquerque, as are in all other western cities, that are moving in that direction. We can't afford to do anything any other way. And as you alluded to, I mean, except for the unusual toll road or something, roads don't pay for themselves either. It's much cheaper to have transit-oriented development.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the people in Raleigh and Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, or Pittsburgh and Albuquerque are really, have been and are really lucky to have these three guys, and we are really lucky to have them here today. So give them a round of applause. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.